Good evening. I'd like to call to order this public hearing in behalf of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. The time is approximately 6:19, and we're convened to consider the application for conditional use submitted by Saint Faith Equity LLC and Wonderspring. The applicants are seeking conditional use approval for the property located at 1208 Alston Road. The request is to legalize the existing use as a private educational center with accessory and related uses, including but not limited to nursery school, kindergarten, elementary school enrichment center, summer camp, and recreational facility in accordance with zoning code section 182 602 2B. Before we begin the public hearing, I'll ask our township manager to please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak?
Present.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp?
Here.
Commissioner Cavender is running a few minutes late. Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn is absent this evening. Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Here. Thank you. At this time, I ask that we begin with a pledge of allegiance led by our township manager, Mr. Berman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To begin this public hearing, I'd like to ask our township solicitor, Mr. John Walco, to help lead us through the public hearing, beginning with the introduction of any exhibits to be included as evidence for this public hearing. Mr. Walco.
Thank you, Madam President. By way of background, this hearing was initially opened on May 5, 2025, before this board had a previously advertised public hearing on the application. At that time, there were three exhibits that were admitted. Township Exhibit 1, which was the application for conditional use, and to specify that Township Exhibit 1 also includes the exhibits to that application, being the exterior photographs of the property, the floor plans and interior photographs of the property, the life safety plans provided, and the parking guidelines that were established and provided along with the application. Township Exhibit 2 was the legal notice for that hearing. Township Exhibit 3 was a written request from the applicant's attorney to continue that hearing to July 7. That hearing was not actually held on July 7, even though it was continued on the record to that date. As a result, the township did re-advertize that hearing for today, August 4. And that brings us to this hearing today. And I will mark three additional exhibits as a result of this rescheduled hearing. Township Exhibit 4 is the written request of the applicant's attorney rescheduling and agreeing to the rescheduling of that hearing until today, August 4, 2025, at 6:15 p.m. Township Exhibit 5 is the legal notice of the conditional use application in tonight's hearing, which was in the Delco Times newspaper, published on July 21 and July 28, 2025. Township Exhibit 6 is the proof of posting of the legal notice, giving the public notice of this hearing on that subject property located 1208 Alston Road. That notice was posted on or before July 28, which is one week prior to this hearing. The applicant tonight is represented by the law firm of Dilworth Paxton. I believe, is it Brandon Savran is here on behalf of the applicant from the law firm. I'm going to turn it over to him in a little bit to briefly introduce the application and let us know just kind of what we're expecting to hear, who's going to testify to what, just in case better questions are aimed at different people. But before we do that, I'd ask if there are any parties seeking party status in opposition of this application or support of that application. And to be clear, anybody present will be given the opportunity to make public comment on the application at the end of the hearing. But at this time, I'm seeing if anybody wants to be a party in opposition to this hearing. Hearing and seeing none, I will then turn it over to Attorney Savran to lead us through this hearing and present the application to the board. I'm not sure if that's on.
It most certainly was not.
All right. Make it turn that up too, so you're not leaving.
Allow me one moment just to get my papers in order here. Thank you. Just for spelling of my name. We want a copy of the application.
As he's setting up, again, this application is subject to the zoning code 182 602, which permits, in the INS district where the property is located, the use of a private educational institution and uses accessory to that private educational institution by conditional use. I don't believe that there is any contention that your applicant meets the definition of a private educational institution, so no need to spend time dwelling on that. Obviously, I think through the course of the hearing, explaining what uses would be permitted, provided by your client.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brandon Savran. I'm an attorney with Dilworth Paxton, as the solicitor mentioned. I represent the two co-applicants on this conditional use application. They are both Pennsylvania-based nonprofits. The property owner is Saint Faith Equity LLC, and the tenant is Wonderspring. And I have witnesses from both of those organizations here tonight. What I plan on doing is essentially summarizing the content of our conditional use application, the written application. As the solicitor mentioned, we attached exhibits to that application in advance, so I don't have any additional applicant exhibits tonight. I think the township exhibits will represent the entirety of the exhibits in this case. What I'll ask, unless any of you object, is that I will name the witnesses and explain their respective knowledge bases, so you'll know who is appropriate for different kinds of questions. I believe that the two co-applicant witnesses may speak a bit during our presentation in chief, but in the interest of time, I would like to essentially speak on their behalf and have them each adopt the veracity of my testimony. That way, I'm not going through an entire question and answer sort of court-style presentation. So with that being said, what is the content of the application? We are here to legalize the existing uses on the property, and those uses are a core private educational use, as the solicitor mentioned, and accessory uses, which namely are a summer camp that happens when school is not in session, and the use of a gymnasium by both children who use the school programs and other community members. I'm going to introduce Doug Martindale, who is the representative of the property owner in one moment, and I'm going to have Doug walk you through the history of how this property transitioned from having a preschool and kindergarten that was operated by Saint Faith Episcopal Church to Wonderspring, which is a preschool that is non-denominational, albeit also nonprofit. The one thing I'll mention before I bring Doug up here is relevant to what sparked us to make this application, and that is that with a building permit and pursuant to that building permit, a few years ago, the current property owner renovated what was the chapel of the Episcopal Church into a gym. And after that work was completed, the township staff raised the fact that there was no known zoning or use permitting for this property. The fact of the matter is that the core educational use that Wonderspring is conducting is highly similar, highly similar, to what Saint Faith Church had on this property for over half a century. In fact, our position, based on our best knowledge, is that they operated a preschool that predated the adoption of the zoning ordinance. But the gymnasium, we will admit, is new. That was created on the current property owner's time, and even though we believe that to be an accessory use to the educational use, it's an accessory use that was not present when Saint Faith was the owner of the property. So the township requested that we make a zoning application, which per the zoning code had to be a conditional use application to formally document and legalize the use of the property. And we are including the educational use, even though it's not new, to sort of wrap everything into one zoning permit, assuming we are lucky enough to get your approval on this application, even though, again, that educational use has really been going on here for the better part of a century, we believe. So that being said, Doug Martindale, could you step up here? Do we want to swear the witness in?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Doug, could you state your name and your identity relative to this application?
Absolutely. My name is Doug Martindale. I am a resident in the Allgates neighborhood of the township. I've been a resident and property owner for about 25 years now.
Can you, and feel free to, you know, give an answer of more than a few words if you'd like. Can you explain for the board how your organization came to own the property and also how Wonderspring came to be the operator of the preschool as opposed to the former operator?
Sure. So my involvement with Saint Faith actually started about 12 years ago, when I have two children, and they both attended Saint Faith Preschool. And at the time, it was run by a Kelly Garrison. This was, that was the director at the time, and I believe that was right around the time when the congregation had vacated the property. We maintained a pretty good relationship. I had a background in real estate management, so, you know, Kelly would run things past She contacted me in around 2018, essentially in tears that the Episcopal diocese had sort of provided an ultimatum, that they were going to have to acquire the building or the diocese was going to just put it on the market for sale. So in that process, I met with my business partner and my wife, and we kind of discussed, you know, how much Saint Faith meant to me and my family, and how much we loved that it was a part of the community, and we just decided to put together the funds to acquire the property. And as such, we took over the lease that the preschool had. So that went well. Soon thereafter was COVID, and we were struggling with enrollment pretty seriously. And basically, we were met with the challenges of the finances. And so, you know, Kelly and myself, and at that time, I was also on the Board of Directors for Saint Faith Preschool, and we came to the idea of we had this chapel space that was really used for storage, and they did some things in it, but it was largely unused. And we had talked about putting in additional classrooms, or what could we do to kind of just revamp that space at such time? And that was about 2001, I believe. My neighbor, also a township resident, Michael Moore, we were sitting around on Christmas, and he's just like, you know, I mentioned the challenges we were having with the space. He said, "Well, let me take a look at it and see what he..." He was very involved in coaching in the township, and his sons were athletes. And so he kind of came up with this idea that, well, what if we use it as just general rec space and essentially use that to help subsidize the rest of the building? So that was sort of like phase two of my ownership. And then we moved into additional financial challenges. Well, simultaneously, I've been on the Board of Directors at Wonderspring for almost a decade now, led by Zakiya Boone, who will also be speaking today. And faced with these new challenges, we had another emergency holiday meeting with our Board of Directors at Wonderspring to discuss, I didn't want to lose this facility, and we needed a larger organization that had just a better structure that we can continue as a going concern. So we were able to pull that off, and so it's been a lot of twists and turns, and that's kind of what's led us here today, and with the goal of just to... One thing I just wanted to say, you know, we've seen a lot of churches being closed down and moving on, and I recognize this is no longer a church, but the community purposes that churches had hasn't left regardless of where they're at, and we feel that this was the best use for this anchor in this neighborhood.
Couple of questions for you.
Sure.
I think in your testimony just now, you mentioned the year 2001. Did you mean 2021?
My apologies. Yes, 2021.
And on the note you ended on about sort of the functions of the church continuing after the church, was there a period of time where before your ownership, the property was no longer being used as a religious congregation, but the preschool that the church was running remained? Do I have that right? There was sort of like a gap where that was the case?
There was, yes. But at the time of my involvement, the congregation had moved on and merged with another church.
Commissioners, I welcome you to ask any questions you have on that testimony, or you can ask Doug questions following the entire presentation. Either. Does anyone have any questions?
So you represent Faith Equity, Saint Faith Equity LLC?
Yes.
You're a member of that LLC, which is the legal landowner of the property, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you are a co-applicant on the application?
Yes.
And when you took over ownership of the property, there was a nursery school, early education facility operating out of the building, correct?
Yes, correct.
And simply, it's sort of transitioned from church-run to sort of non-church-run to what you have today through Wonderspring. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And you believe, it's your testimony, that that's all the same type of educational facility, early education and ancillary uses throughout the building?
Yes. Nothing changed. We took over the existing operations.
Does the control of the gym itself, now obviously, I would assume that it's used by Wonderspring, correct, for their activities?
Yes.
Do you maintain control of that gym for any other users of the gym, or is that Wonderspring that controls the other uses of the gym?
I work with Wonderspring to allow other users that might come about, which we'll discuss today.
Who would be testifying to that?
So the two other witnesses we have are Michael Moore, who Doug just mentioned in his testimony, and helps get non-Wonderspring users into the gym in an organized manner. And we also have Dr. Zakiya Boone, who is the CEO of Wonderspring. So in the organizational structure, sort of is above the director of this specific facility and oversees the directors of all of Wonderspring's dozen or so locations. So those are the other two witnesses.
Okay. Thank you. I have other questions. Thank you. Does the Board of Commissioners have any other questions for this witness?
I don't have questions at this point. I will hold my questions to the end, just in case they get answered by one of the other witnesses, but I would ask for you to stick around because I may have a question for you later.
Oh, sure. Certainly.
Call your next witness, please.
So I think at this time, I'll proceed with a narrative, trying to find a way to speak into that microphone without hunching over. So I think at this time, what I'd like to do is proceed with a narrative about the school, and then I'll have Dr. Boone come up and adopt that narrative, and then open the floor for questions of her. So Wonderspring, as I mentioned, is a nonprofit organization. It operates similar schools in other locations. I'm going to start by speaking about the physical plant just for a moment. So the property is essentially a two-story structure with a large, partially above-ground basement, a ground-level floor, and then a small second floor. If you look at the exhibits that we submitted attached to our application, I did not do this in the original submission, but I emailed the township a second copy where I bait-stamped the page numbers to make identification of the different pages a little easier. So let's see if I can do this on the fly, but page 33 is the floor plan for the lower level, and this has seven classrooms, I believe, and a very large common space that's flexible. It can be used for meals. It can be used for sort of indoor play activities. And as I mentioned, a lot of the different parts of this floor have windows at the tops of the room. So, you know, not, I think, every corner, but a lot of it gets natural light. From a safety standpoint, this lower level has, I believe, three interior staircases to get upstairs to the ground level, which is just one floor up. It also has three direct exits to the outside. And on that note, page 43, I'm sorry. What I'm showing you right now is part of what's marked as Exhibit C, which is interior photos and floor plans. In Exhibit D, at page 43, is a life safety plan, which illustrates egress routes on each of the floors. But sticking in Exhibit C for now and going upstairs, on the first floor, which is the page that is bait-stamped page 13, there are four additional classrooms, and this is the floor that also has the gymnasium that was converted from the chapel. There are outdoor play facilities on the ground level on the east side of the property. And then at stamped page 29 is the floor plan for the small upstairs, which I believe just contains one additional classroom, whoop, one additional classroom and some storage space and a staff lounge with a kitchenette. So that's all just to give you a sense of what this looks like from a spatial standpoint. Wonderspring is a series of schools that is licensed by both the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Department of Human Services. This location currently has 43 children enrolled in its preschool. And the core services are as follows. So on Monday and Fridays, Wonderspring has early care, traditional school hours programming, and aftercare for children ages 2 through pre-K, so that would be ages 2 through 5. So from ages 2 through 5, you can attend this as a full-time school. It has a kindergarten enrichment program. So what that means is that children who are enrolled in Haverford School District's half-day kindergarten can be bused to and from this Wonderspring location to attend school for the other half of their day. And it also operates a summer camp for children of those same ages in the summer. Wonderspring intends to add similar programs for infants and for one-year-olds at this location, which it operates at other locations. It has not done so yet. Wonderspring also intends to add before and after-school enrichment for elementary school-aged children. So in practice, what that means is that you would have most likely an older brother or sister who attends one of Haverford School District's elementary schools. Younger brother or sister is a preschooler at Wonderspring, and they could be transported to Wonderspring and spend the afternoon on the same property with younger brother or sister, so that when mom or dad comes to pick them up at the end of the day, both kids are in the same location. That also is not starting.
Is it accurate, then, to say that the infant use is accessory to the Wonderspring educational use because it provides related childcare and also a feeder use of that nursery use into the educational use?
Yes, I would agree with all of that.
And is it accurate that Wonderspring uses the summer camp during the summer, again, as a program activities associated with the educational uses of the school itself?
Yes. There's certainly overlap between the students who use the summer camp and the preschool. And I think just from a sort of objective analysis, it's very common, I know this is the case with my own children, where, you know, preschools across Pennsylvania will operate a summer camp in order to get some revenue out of the facility.
Just wanted to make sure that there was a relationship there.
Yes, absolutely.
Sorry to interrupt. Please continue.
The recreation space. So the recreation space, I'm going to touch on very briefly, only because I'll bring up Mr. Moore to testify as to what goes on in the gymnasium, in addition to the Wonderspring kids having access to it as part of their educational curriculum. The township zoning ordinance at section 1205 identifies the legal standards and factual standards that we have to satisfy to qualify for a conditional use approval. I write, or my colleague Meredith, wrote a full explanation of why we believe our application meets those standards in the application. So I'm not going to consume your time walking through those explanations tonight, but I'll just note that they are in our application, beginning at paragraph 24, and I'll very briefly just touch on a few of those points. Perhaps most importantly, that at section 602 of the zoning ordinance in the property's INS district, "Public or private educational institutions are a use that may be permitted by conditional use approval." The zoning ordinance does not define education or educational institution, and while I'll leave it to your solicitor to give you his thoughts on that, our thoughts are that the courts in our state have told us that when the word "education" is not defined in an ordinance, it is to be read very broadly, so much so that our use is certainly within the ambit of an undefined education term in a zoning ordinance because the courts have said that things that are not schools whatsoever are also included as education. So we feel that we are certainly education. And one other qualification to get a conditional use approval is consistency with the township comprehensive plan. I just wanted to say that not only with the comprehensive plan, but with the spirit of the zoning ordinance, it happens to be the case that in the INS district, a public community center, now, we are not a public community center because we're not owned by the public, but a public community center would be a permitted by right use. So that's just to say that this zoning district and its regulations comprehend the use of a facility like a gymnasium. And the comprehensive plan, which, as I understand it, was last passed in nineteen eighty-eight, speaks about the need for services to supplement traditional township-owned recreational and other services, and we would contend that that's exactly what our gym does. It allows opportunities for community members to recreate in a location in a way that is not disruptive to the community if they can't make it to a township-owned facility. So with that being said, let me call up Michael Moore to speak a little bit more about the gym and how it's used, and then I'll call up Dr. Boone to adopt what I said about the school and take your questions on the school, if you have any. So, Michael.
I do. M-O-R-E.
Michael, could you state your name and your relationship with the applicants, who are Dr. Boone in Wonderspring and Doug on behalf of the property owner?
Wait, sorry, start the question again.
Can you state your name and your relationship with Wonderspring and/or with St. Faith?
Yes, sorry about that. My name is Michael Moore. I'll throw in there that I've also been a township resident, neighbor to Doug in the Allgates community for twenty, twenty years. So, I guess my relationship with Doug and Zakiya was facilitated by the discussion that we had in two thousand twenty-one-ish surrounding what can we do with the chapel to kind of help this preschool that looks like it may not be around anymore. And through that, all my years of coaching, Haverford Football Club, Hilltop Baseball, St. Dennis Basketball, lots of travel teams in several different leagues, I said, once I saw the space, I said, "It's really small, but it could be like a pretty good rec space." You could, you know, and we went through, you know, how you could kind of get things to work, and, you know, maybe this will help subsidize things for the, you know, St. Faith. And, you know, I know that there's a need from running around to all sorts of gyms and schools and places trying to find gym time for my own kids or my own teams. And so through that process, I've, you know, now kind of connected myself to Doug and Zakiya and taken on that role.
Michael, am I correct that you are more involved with getting folks into the gym who are not Wonderspring students as opposed to getting Wonderspring students?
That's correct, yes, that's correct. So, really, the, you know, there's a lot of need out there. I know we have the great township, we have the crack, a lot of great space, we have schools all around, you know, St. Dennis, the middle school, the high school, where you can get access to gym space. You know, I've been over at Cooper Town, at Manoa, everywhere, you know, trying to find space for kids, but there's a bigger need. So, right away, I said, "I know, you know, on the weekends, in the evenings, there's a lot of people that could use the space, a lot of teams, a lot of kids looking for training, a lot of leagues that are looking for access for space." And this was especially exacerbated, to a higher degree, after COVID, when you were coming out of the lockdowns and there were still a lot of spaces that were still locked down. So, there was a much, the need is still there, but there was definitely a huge number initially that kind of was able to kind of naturally deteriorate a little bit as other places kind of opened back up, but still a very strong need, and not just basketball. You know, Haverford Soccer Club's been in there. We have a small, I think it's called Soccer Shots, which are kind of Kindies and preschool kids doing soccer. I believe we have Haverford Gymnastics, who just won a national championship for one of their age groups. I forget their exact name, but they've also been in there, they've been looking for space, and I think have been on top of the, I forget the name of the space, but in an attic on top of like, I don't wanna say it's a bar, but the Legion, or I forget, anyway. Yeah, something to that effect.
Is it also the case that you will enable adult community members to use the space since you just spoke at length about?
Yes, yes. So, there are, actually, there's been a lot more requests for people that just wanna get shots up. There's a couple of men's, local men's, just call them pickup groups, they usually play outdoors. They'll come in on, you know, let's say, Monday nights or Wednesday nights, and they'll play pickup. But yes, there's adults that are also looking for recreational space as well.
Are those adults township residents to the best of your knowledge?
They are township residents, correct.
To try to summarize this, everything you just spoke about, all of these activities, what times of the week and day is this non-Wonderspring usage occurring? And how often? Just try to get us a sense, like, logistically, of how often these folks are coming?
Well, I'd say if we could kind of separate it from, like, the leagues that are using the space, that's weekends. I think that's where, you know, the bulk of any issues or, you know, any sort of issues raised by anybody would be, I think, associated with that. That is only during the winter, Saturdays and Sundays, probably from the end of November through to mid-February, towards the end of February. That's the bulk of the use, but it's only gonna be on weekends. It's mostly evenings and mornings where we get, you know, major foot traffic comparatively because the winter leagues are only in the winter. Pretty much outside of that, the space is empty. And, you know, now open for some other groups such as, you know, gymnastics and so on and so forth.
Before I invite you to ask questions of Michael, I did just wanna mention that we would like to offer, if you will, an applicant's proposed condition of approval. We met, in addition to hosting a public community meeting, where the turnout was actually very supportive of this application, we also met with Angelo Capuzzi, who is a near neighbor and sits on the Township Planning Commission. Angelo raised specific concerns about one youth basketball league that had a fairly heavy schedule of teams that were not from the township, in addition to some teams that were from the township. Actually, as recently as today, we've been discussing with Angelo sort of how to address this one league, which he feels is the most problematic in terms of traffic and parking. And what we would like to propose, which I think is a little bit different than anything else I've mentioned to the township staff to this point, is that if any relationship between the property and the Malvern League is maintained, that games would only occur on the property in which one of the teams is a Haverford Township-based team. There would be no more use of the facility for this Malvern League where all of the children are coming from outside of the township because we find that that generates the most traffic.
My understanding that it was proposed as a potential condition that was offered,
Yes.
that the applicant shall terminate its agreements with the Malvern League for gymnasium usage.
So we'd like to modify that, having spoken to Angelo to get a little bit more clear of an understanding over the weekend, and really, since I sent that letter, that we'd like that relationship to be allowed to continue with the mandate that games and practices may only occur when there are Haverford Township children participating in them, if it's agreeable.
How would it be known if there were Haverford residents participating in the Malvern League?
Well, that actually might be a good question for Michael. My understanding is that the teams sort of tend to be geographically based somewhere. Do you wanna speak to that a little?
Yes, I mean, not to go back on anything that you just said.
No, please, clarify.
Yeah, we wanna be a community resource, not a aggravation or impediment to the, you know, happiness of neighbors. So, we, after speaking with Angelo, you know, it was like, if this is causing a lot of problem, a lot of traffic, people don't know the area, they're double parked, they're just creating a lot of congestion, we'll just, we just won't do it. And Angelo, who will probably speak as well, so he can say what he'll say, but he said, "Well, I don't necessarily want to hurt township families that are in teams that are using the gym. So, if it's township people using it, I'm good. If it's outside, I'm not. I don't know quite how we're gonna go about that. Maybe it's still no Malvern League, but it's another township league," or something like that. I don't know. But I do know that if the Malvern League is a bone of contention, that we don't want to have that, so.
Is another part of that condition, say, that the applicant shall not allow usage at the gym on weekends, that would result in traffic generation comparable to the Malvern League? Is that also something that?
Yeah, we stand by that, and we can do that because that's sort of been a one-of-a-kind issue to us.
What is comparable to the Malvern League? Are we basing this on the number of participants?
I would say it's basically based on outside township versus inside township. Inside the township, everybody's more aware of the streets, where the buildings are, the community, they're not confused, they're not lost. Whereas when we have, the Malvern League stretches across, I mean, they're kind of everywhere, from Bucks County all the way in. So you have people coming from, that don't know anything about Haver Town, where the gym is, trying to find it, how to park, how to unload, and that creates a huge amount of congestion. I think the other thing that we touched on, which we never drafted into anything, was also, the main reason that that's an issue is because the games are lined up hour by hour by hour. So there's overlap of people in the gym parked, new people coming, getting out, so it creates more congestion versus if we had a half-hour gap, people could leave, parking space is open, people come in, there's less congestion, but overall, with the way Malvern's currently set up, you know, I just, I don't know that he's going to want to do that, the gentleman who runs the league. So it's better just to step away and come back with something that, if we're gonna do it, we know that we're gonna space it so there's no congestion, or it's gonna be a small number relatively, that we wouldn't create the same sort of congestion.
What is an acceptable number that wouldn't create?
I don't have.
We're in the range, I'm just trying to find something that is objective here, too.
Would that be number of?
Participants, vehicles, whatever you think is the standard that you would be measured by.
Is it possible, and I apologize to have to make this request, that the entire reason we offered that condition was to try to smooth things over with Angelo and the folks he?
So this is what we'll do.
We're just not there yet.
How about it will be that you agree gym usage resulting in parking congestion and crowding will be regulated to the satisfaction of the township? And then the township will speak with Mr. Capuzzi to find something that is agreeable in more detail, that we'd be able to hammer out those details at a later time?
That's fine with us.
Okay.
Mr. Walker, since we're on this topic, I do have a question, a legal question for you about this. As a, obviously, they're a private entity, but right now, we're talking about conditional approvals, and now the township's getting involved in the regulation of it. Can we actually require them to have at least one township team participating in any games they have? Can we make that a requirement legally, to the exclusion of non-t township residents?
What I'm hearing is that there aren't any official township teams, but they're wanting to incorporate township residents within these different leagues. This isn't something where I think we'd be able to regulate or compel than to require a township league to play in that gym. There may not be any. There may not be any that wants to do that. So, I wouldn't compel them to force them to take a township league, but it appears to me from the testimony that it has been used and will continue to be used by township residents. Is that accurate?
Absolutely.
And at any time that you were excluding township residents from using that league, that'd be against your testimony that you're presenting today and the intent, and that activity would be in violation of your conditional use approval, correct?
I would agree with that, yeah.
Look, I was just confused because I know at one point, he had said that to try to address the Malvern League issue, they would have one quote-unquote "travel team" versus one hometown team. I mean, that's why I was a little confused there.
Yeah, and I heard the same thing. I just don't think that that's something that, as a practical matter, the township staff would be able to enforce and keep track of.
Could we enforce the number of games played on a day? So that we wouldn't be able to do game after game, that there would not need to be four games a day, or?
I think that that's something, based upon the condition that they're willing to, that the township would be able to meet with the applicant to discuss acceptable parameters, also taking a consultation, the neighbors around there that deal with this day-to-day. And if that is a way to address that concern and that issue, that is something that we could work into a detail. That's acceptable.
Any other questions for Mr.?
Right now, how about the hours that you, at night, when is the, when do you shut things down?
Nine, I believe it's like nine, nine-thirty. Pretty much, we are done and people kind of trickling out, I mean, similar to the YMCA.
And how about, and on the weekends, in the morning, what time do you?
Mornings, never earlier, like, teams are never coming in. I believe the earliest group that we have coming in is maybe seven-thirty. They kind of start to set up, and it's not a lot of people. It's Soccer Shots with some, you know, Kindy kids and preschoolers.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I'll bring up our final witness.
Thank you.
I have one that I believe he can answer. Who built the actual gym? Like, who turned it into a gymnasium with a basketball hoop?
It's, I mean, honestly, it's not actually a built gym. The only change that happened was the pews were removed, the floors were sanded down, and then portable nets were brought in.
So you made it into a basketball court?
No, no, but I mean, it wasn't like a construction.
Who did that?
Myself and Doug did it.
Okay, okay. I was just trying to clarify timeline.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, I thought you were wondering, is it like?
No, I've seen the pictures, I know that, yeah, I've seen the pictures, I know what you did, but I'm just curious.
Okay.
Thank you, or excuse.
I have a question, and I don't know who can answer it. Typically, how many children are playing in a game?
Typically, it's five-on-five, so there's ten kids on the court, pretty much at most. And I believe that's, for basketball, that's the most that you would have in an activity, and I believe that's the most we have of any activity. I think the soccer with the little kids, I believe that is also five-on-five. I could be mistaken, it could be six-on-six, but it's something to that effect. I think the, also, just to clarify that point, which I think is where you're going, but the, a lot of the traffic concerns was also generated by the fact that, you know, it was like kindergarten kids, first-grade kids, so mom's there, dad's there, sister's there, Uncle Sam's there, grandparents are there. So just a lot of people wanted to come see the little kids do stuff. So just a lot of people wanted to come see the little kids do stuff, also was, was part of the problem, in hindsight.
Thank you. And then I have a question about the, the preschool right now, and I don't know if you're the right person, or should I save that question for the end?
The, the next witness.
All right, I will save that.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Boone.
Sorry. Swear you. Yeah. I do. Zakiya, Z-A-K-I-Y-Y-A-H, last name Boone, B-O-O-N-E. And let me make sure I correct the record, it's Zakiya Boone, MBA, not PhD. I want to make sure to clarify that. Thank you, that's okay. I'll accept that one day, though.
Ms. Boone, MBA. Did you hear my testimony with regard to the preschool and all of the Wonder Spring programming during my presentation tonight?
I did.
Be honest, was it fully true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, or is there anything you would like to correct from what I had to say?
Aside from my credentials, it was completely accurate.
Okay, thank you. Would you therefore adopt my testimony as if, as if it had been your own?
I would.
Okay. This time, I'm going to ask the commissioners if they have any questions.
Ms. Boone, and maybe you should bring Mr. Martindale, just have him ready in case a question is ready, more apt for him as well. With the application, there were life safety plans included for the building. Would you agree that those life safety plans would be implemented at all times that are necessary while the school and the building is in operation, including maintaining all of the means of egress, fire alarms, fire extinguishers being in place?
Absolutely.
There were parking guidelines attached as Exhibit D to the application. Are you agreeing to commit and fulfill those guidelines and ensure that the users for the school and for, I guess, the gym fulfill the obligations of those guidelines?
Absolutely.
Yes.
To address some of the concerns of parking, my understanding is you're agreeable to a condition that drop-off and pickup of students at the school shall be permitted only on the south side of Brookline Boulevard and the west side of Alston Road. Is that correct?
Correct.
And you'd be willing to accept that as a condition?
Yes.
Now, although it's outside of your control, if the township was to impose parking restrictions along the east side of Alston Road between Brookline Boulevard and Sagamore Road, you would have no opposition to those?
Say that again.
If the township was to take action through an ordinance to place parking restrictions along the east side of Alston Road between Brookline Boulevard and Sagamore Road, would you not oppose that ordinance?
That would be fine.
And you're agreeable, and as a condition of approval, you would make sure to have a designee of the school, whether it's a volunteer, staff member, employee, whoever it might be, designated to supervise the drop-off and pickup operations on a daily basis to ensure the established protocols within those parking and drop-off guidelines are implemented and observed?
Correct.
If the township took it upon itself to install a 15 mile-per-hour speed limit along the 1200 block of Alston Roads during drop-off and pickup periods, you wouldn't oppose that speed limit, correct?
Would not, that would be brilliant.
There's no building renovations being proposed as part of this application, correct?
That's correct.
No, sir.
And you'd agree that if, in the future, you needed to do any renovations, do anything that required building permits, land development, you would have to go through that process and comply with whatever current standards would be applied at that time under the applicable code?
Understood, yes.
That was the only, the clarifications that I had, and the, clearly, the Wonder Spring School is also using the gymnasium for their activities, correct?
Correct.
That was the only questions I had. Does the board have any questions for this witness related to the Wonder Spring School use?
Thank you for being here and answering a question. How large is the current enrollment and what do you anticipate it growing to?
Currently enrolled, as of today, we have 47 children, but September will come school year, and with the new school year, we anticipate that enrollment this school year at 68. The max would be 100.
And that would include the children who might come after school when their elementary schools are dismissed, or is that a separate number?
Correct, correct. So at any given time, including the before and after-school students, we would estimate 100 kids should be more than reasonable to accommodate all the age groups.
And you've got capacity for that in terms of fire code, et cetera, et cetera?
Correct. The Pennsylvania Department of Human Services gave us an occupancy of 165.
Wow.
So we feel like 100 is, is more than, we're, we are easily able to accommodate that number.
Thank you.
I, I have a question, I think Mr. Berman stepped out, I don't know if he's the one that would answer this or not. Jamie, you might know, under the letter that was sent, that we received today from counsel, one of the Paragraph Eight references, they're the belief that by getting this conditional use, that it would satisfy zoning approvals and all building permits that are necessary. And my, my question is, are we aware of any building permits or construction permits that should have been received over the past few years that weren't received?
Would you allow my witnesses to attempt to answer that, is that for the township's statement?
If, I, I wonder, if she, if she knows any information, I would appreciate that, then I'd ask for your, your witness to testify to that.
Sure, right now, the only outstanding permit is the use and occupancy permit that was basically for a construction project that occurred, I think, in 2022, and that there were building permits pulled for it, everything was up to par until the final inspection, and the gymnasium was term, determined to be a, in surprise accessory use for the, the site. And so then that kind of triggered that the use and occupancy needed to change, and that's the outstanding permit at this time.
And that's what would be satisfied by this hearing?
That's what would be satisfied by this hearing, if they are-
If it was voted approved.
Approved, correct.
That, that actually answers my question.
Okay.
Any other questions? No other witnesses?
No other witnesses.
The township exhibits which include your application and the exhibits to your application are moved into evidence. At this time, we'll turn it over to public comment on the application, see if there's any members of the public who'd like to have comment. If you could state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Angelo Capuzzi, I live at 1110 Alston Road, we're the fifth property down from St. Faith's property. Glad to be sworn in?
No, I mean, I, I don't think you need to be sworn in, just offer your comment.
I have a quick question. Do you have to be opposed to the application to be considered party to the proceedings?
You do not have to oppose the application.
Okay, so I'd like to be listed then.
As a party to the application?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have any witnesses that you would plan to call in the hearing?
Just me.
Okay.
But I have the right to question the applicant's witnesses?
You would have that right.
Okay.
They would have a right if they needed to provide additional testimony in response, because again, we're kind of letting you in late.
Right.
If you're going to provide, if you're wanting to be a party, it was said that you lived across the street, so apparently you do live in close proximity and are impacted by the application, so you're going to be granted that party status, but now your, your comment will be testimony.
Yes.
Your own testimony, so we are going to have you sworn in.
Yep.
For you to provide testimony of yourself, and then it will give you the opportunity to, to cross-examine any of the witnesses that were present.
Okay, and then they, they can ask me questions also.
They certainly could, well.
I do.
I close this.
Just for, for the record, your name and your address?
That's a township.
Okay.
So for, for your name and your address for the record.
Angelo Capuzzi, C.A.P., U.Z.Z.I., 1110 Alston Road, A.L.L.S.D.O.N., Havertown, Pennsylvania.
Now, do you have any testimony that you would like to provide?
Just, just my rambling here. Okay, where to start? Okay, generally, I support the application, St. Faith's and Wonder Spring, to establish the Early Education Center, okay? And for the record, St. Faith's had been an integral part of our neighborhood for over 100 years, over 100, and the Early Learning Center offers an important and much-needed service to the township and to the community. Let me start with the gymnasium, okay, because that might be the easiest thing to talk about. Just to give you a sense on what was happening last year, I have a copy of the Malvern League's schedule for December, and there are 37 games scheduled for that league in the month of December, roughly 12 or 13 games per weekend. Of those 37 games that were scheduled, 19 were played at St. Faith's. The Malvern League, for this particular group, it's first-grade boys. They have 25 teams, and each team plays 10 games, okay? If you do the math, that equates to 125 total games for the entire league. So basically, half of those games would be played at St. Faith's. So that's, creates a lot of traffic for the reasons that the applicant stated, we just felt, or I just felt that was too much traffic for our neighborhood to handle. You had people coming in, looking for places to park, they certainly won't go down to Municipal Lot, on Brookline Boulevard to park, they'll park in the neighborhood. So I just wanted to say that I'm not opposed to using the gymnasium for school-related activities, or for community activities, as long as that community is Havertown Township. I, I, I don't think we need teams coming in from Newtown Square, and Marple, and Springfield, and Tridifern, and wherever else there are teams. And there must be a way to equate each team with where the kids are located. The basketball team has 10, 10 players, five on the court and five on the bench, so it's not just five and five from each team, it's more than that. So that's, from my standpoint, if, if the school or St. Faith's could limit the number of games to two or three per weekend, I don't think that would be a big deal. And then they have the other groups that I wasn't even aware of coming in at night and things like that, so as long as-
How many games per weekend are occurring now? You said there was 19 games?
19 in the month of December, so it's like six or seven per weekend. And I have a schedule here, you can look at it if you want. So that's, that's what I like to say about the gymnasium. Was part of your exhibits, the minutes from the planning commission meeting?
No.
No, okay. The applicant appeared before the Township Planning Commission on April 10th, and we asked them, I asked them several questions, one of which was, how many students can you project would be coming with this expansion? And, and Ms. Boone said approximately 70, and tonight I'm hearing 100, okay? That's, that's a lot more than I was anticipating her saying. So you have to imagine that you got additional teachers, additional parents dropping kids off, that's more traffic than 70 would be. So I, I think the township should consider an upper limit, somewhere less than 100. I just think that's too much traffic for the neighborhood to bear, and, and actually, one of the requirements of a conditional use hearing is to address impacts to the township, and I didn't hear any testimony regarding potential impacts from the expansion to the There are safety concerns involved, and I appreciate the conditions that you referenced as far as loading and unloading on the one-sided street. Just so you know, until one year ago, I've been there 45 years, until one year ago, parking was restricted on the east side of Alston Road between Sagamore and Brookline Boulevard. You couldn't park there, there's no parking. The only time you could park there were Sundays between eight and 12, because of the church function. So about a year ago, those signs disappeared, for whatever reason, I don't know. But when you think about people parking on one side of the street, and people loading and unloading on the other side of the street, Alston Road is about 30 feet wide, it leaves you with maybe a 12-foot travel lane for two-way traffic, you have people unloading their children, they open their car doors into that light lane of traffic, okay? Some people don't observe the rules and park on the west side and unload their children. So I, I think it's important that whatever protocol is established, it be enforced by the school, and that if the township would consider putting those parking restrictions back in on the east side of Alston Road, that would be a big help as far as keeping traffic through that area. I don't know necessarily, we need 15 mile-an-hour speed limit signs in that block? It's a short block, I don't think traffic is that fast to begin with, but I think what might be better would be signs that say "school," okay? People drive past there, they think they're driving past the church, but they're not, it's a school. So a school sign within that block on either side of the street would be good, and also there are a lot of people who walk to school, and the intersection of Sagamore and Alston is a three-way stop sign configuration, but to enhance that stopping requirement, it might be a good idea to put in stop bars and crosswalks, so people can walk safely across the street, and vehicles would know that the stop sign is reinforced with that marking on the street. The, the other thing is, Wonder Spring is an educational facility, and it's basically a different use than what previously existed on that property. The previous use was a religious institution, and the daycare was permitted as an accessory use to the religious institution. When the religious use ceased to exist, that accessory use became illegal, which is probably why we're here tonight.
Right.
As far as the definition of accessory use, the definition in the zoning code says that the accessory use is to be subordinate to the principal use and supplemental to, okay? I don't have the exact verbiage, but basically it says it's supposed to be geared to the educational facility. So using it for the daycare center, using the gym for the daycare center makes a lot of sense, and I understand that use. And I think we're giving them a break by letting them use it for purposes that aren't related to Wonder Spring. Finally, because it is a change of use, and because it's an expansion of what's there now, I think this needs some type of zoning relief, if for any reason other than the fact that there's, there, there're parking, there's no parking on the site now, and they're making that situation worse. So I think they need to go through the various process with the zoning board to get relief from the additional parking that would be required for the additional students that are coming there. And we were told, I was told by members of the staff that that was the case, that after we're done here, we'd have to go to the zoning board. So I just want to make sure that that happens, and that any approvals you guys might give would be conditioned upon the applicant obtaining that zoning relief, if it's needed. That's about all I have to say.
Any questions for this witness? Saverin, any questions for the witness?
I think I have two.
If you could come up to the microphone. If you could come up to the microphone.
Hi, Angela. Okay, I believe I just have two questions on cross-examination for you. Number one, in your capacity as a planning commission member at the planning commission hearing, did you propose, as a condition of approval, a cap on enrollment to your fellow planning commission members?
I did, and we couldn't agree on the wording. Okay? My contention is that based upon the testimony presented at the planning commission by the applicant, it was indicated that 70 would be the practical limit that could fit at that school. And I think that an appropriate condition would be that no more than 70, 75, 80 students should be permitted on the property at any given time.
But you did take a vote-
Right.
-on the planning commission with your colleagues on whether to impose a cap, is that correct?
Correct.
What was the outcome of that vote?
It was, I don't know, three to four, we lost, it didn't pass.
Okay. The other question I have is, in your experience as a neighbor or a near neighbor of this property, are you aware of any physical harm that has occurred to your neighbors or others that you're aware of since Wonder Spring moved into this property due to traffic, parking, or other such impacts?
Any physical-
Physical harm?
No. I'm not aware of any, I don't know if the police department would keep records on that, but I'm not aware of anything.
Those are my only questions.
Severn, there is a question that was presented about limiting the number of games from the Malvern League on the weekends. Is that something that your client would be willing to do? I mean, I think the point is well-taken that Malvern League doesn't have anything to do with Wonder Spring and the uses that you're pursuing here today. Is that something that your client would be willing to do?
Yes. The only caveat to our willingness to do so is some of Angelo's testimony is new knowledge to us, so I don't know if we're able to give you a number this evening.
We're not going to ask for a number this evening.
Otherwise, yes.
I guess, can we limit, rather than saying the Malvern League, just the number of games? So because if another league-
Sure, just generally limit the activities on the weekends to a level that doesn't create parking shortages and traffic issues within the community. It seems like it's only on the weekends and when there's larger, ongoing, all-day-type activities. Maybe it's not limiting the number of games, maybe it's limiting the times and spacing them out. But, long story short, Mr. Capuzzi, would you be willing to work with the township and the applicant within the next week or so to come up with some conditions?
Absolutely.
Wait, sorry, go ahead, Kevin. You go.
I just wanted to say out loud, I guess I have concerns with the township being involved with any sort of enforcement requiring some sort of township resident participation. I think that's, I don't think that's something we necessarily should be conditioning anything. In addition, just from a practicality perspective, my understanding of the Malvern League is essentially that it's not just boys in first grade, that might be the only league that plays at St. Faith. I do not know the answer to that question, but it's essentially for grades from schools or groups or really anything that you form eight to 10 people with, and you have a volunteer coach. And you say, "I am coaching Chatham Park first graders." And eight kids show up, and the only affiliation with the school is that they go together. It's not really run by them, it's just a volunteer-based organization. And I think anything, certainly, we shouldn't be, I don't know how you would enforce that even if you could, and I don't know if you should. So I certainly would encourage, if there is some sort of restriction, that it be based on hours. I also think games, when you're talking about different activities being played at rec center, games is a fluid number and could lead to differences of opinion. So my suggestion would be to create some sort of agreement on hours that it is. Also, the police may be better equipped, but my thought, my recollection is when we allowed parking on the east side of Alston to reduce the amount of parking that would occur further into the neighborhood. And it was designed to give more parking in and around St. Faith. If that hasn't happened, that's another discussion, but I don't know if it should be part of this consideration.
And I would like to express my concern about asking the applicant right now to accept conditions that are as amorphous as been described as, "You won't do so many games, as it will cause a problem." I don't know who's going to measure that, or what our measure is going to be by that. We either set firm conditions, and this board votes on them one way or another. And I am concerned, frankly, with suggesting that these folks go back and negotiate with Mr. Capuzzi. He's wearing two hats right now, one as a private citizen on Alston Road, but another as a member of the planning commission. And I think, I don't think we should be directing this applicant to go back and just negotiate individually with somebody. I think the applicant is now before us, and that comes to us to do so.
At this point, I would not be able to, or the township should not be able to negotiate with just the applicant because Mr. Capuzzi is a party to the application. So in order to ensure that there are conditions acceptable, he would be involved in that as well. Doesn't mean that ultimately, the condition that would be imposed up to this board. And it, because this board does not have to follow anything that the applicant or Mr. Capuzzi as additional party would like this board to do, it'll be the decision of the board that something would be acceptable to the board. And that would be in place prior to a vote on this application.
I appreciate that explanation. Still concerned about the amorphous nature of some of the questioning and some of the, and some of the facts versus opinion that's been elicited or asked for. It's not a criticism of you, Mr. Walco, it's at all. I'm just trying to understand this process, this is a public hearing, unlike some of the other public hearings we've had in the past. And I just want to make sure our applicants are being treated fairly.
Thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Boone about when drop-off and pickup is. And, because I would assume it's sort of limited.
Not exactly when it comes to families. So, and that's actually a great, I'd like to demonstrate exactly how that might impact the community. So for the preschoolers, there is no specific, like, you must drop off at 8:00 a.m., you must pick up at 4:00 p.m. So it is a rolling drop-off and a rolling pickup? So there wouldn't be 100 families showing up all at the same time trying to find parking to pick up their kids or drop off their kids? They are streaming in, they are streaming out, so that staggered drop-off and pickup, I think the parking space that would be allowable should be adequate based upon the volume of families that we see. For the kindergarten, the half-day kindergarten enrichment that you heard discussed, there are buses that come from Haverford School District schools, and those drop-off and pickups, they pull up right on that side of Alston Road, unload to the staff person who's there, and those are also staggered, so there's not a line of buses all around the corner just waiting to drop children off. Lastly, before COVID, there were a lot of kids at St. Faith, and they were being dropped off and picked up for, as I heard it, 100 years. So there might not have even been cars around when St. Faith first started having drop-off and pickup. However, it's obvious that this has been a community asset, and the community has been able to figure out a way to be agreeable as neighbors, which Wonder Spring is committed to doing, and to make sure that children can transgress safely into the building.
Thank you.
I have another question, if you don't mind. Is it correct in the application, or that you said that it was said, that there would be someone devoted to supervising drop-off and pickup?
Yes, we did agree to that as one of the conditions, that there would be a staff or a person. So let's say the staff person is out sick that day, we'd ask a volunteer mom, dad, grandma, "Can you please supervise drop-off and pickup?" To make sure that there wasn't a responsible adult assigned to monitor enforcement of the requirements.
And would that mean there would need to be someone there basically your entire opening hour, since you said that drop-off and pickup seemed to be on a rolling basis?
So for the, not for a drop-off and pickup, of the preschoolers, of the school-aged children. So the preschoolers are the cars coming. The, my understanding was the concern was about the buses, and making sure that the buses had appropriate supervision, so they weren't idling, they weren't pulling up beside each other, like, that was a separate requirement, as I understood it. Thank you.
I just have one question, and I guess this might be to Mr. Walco, actually. Mr. Capuzzi made reference to zoning, having to go to the zoning board. But when I read the letter, there, I think it's the applicant's position that if they get our approval, they don't have to go to the zoning board. So my question is, is do they, if they get our approval, do they or don't they actually have to go to the zoning board?
I'm not aware of any zoning relief that they would need to have.
Okay. Okay, I'll leave you guys with one last thought, and then I'll sit down. And I'm reading from the Comprehensive Plan, you guys remember the Comprehensive Plan? One of the recommendations for Goal 2, the Land Use, Housing, and Economic Development Plan, is to develop and institute strategies and controls to eliminate encroachments by institutional and commercial users into adjacent residential neighborhoods. Neighborhoods. Thank you.
So, Mr. Capuzzi, just for the record, no other exhibits, no other testimony, no other witnesses?
I'm good.
No other questions? Thank you.
I can call my wife if you want.
It's your case, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comment on the application?
Tom Hall, Haverford Township. I'll be brief, and I'm here in the context of public comment, not as a party. I'm here in support of the applicant. Unloading, loading, parking is never easy in a town that was designed when there were much fewer cars on the road and is older. But these are the types of activities and places that our children need, that our community need. These are places where children are off screens, which is much-needed also. That's all I have, sorry I can't stick around, the library's having a drum circle, I recently bought a cowbell, and I look forward to using it.
Any other public comment on this application? Thank you, Mr. Hall, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Kristen Haskell, and I've been a township resident for 37 years. I had to count that on my fingers while I was waiting. I just wanted to offer some comments about how I've been able to use the property over the years. I have two, two of my three kids went to St. Faith as students, and when they were there, I'm sure there were at least 100 or more students in the building. So I know that the enrollment went down during COVID, and, you know, maybe they'll be going back up, but it, to me, doesn't seem any different from when my kids were there at that time. In addition, I have made a lot of use out of the recreational space in the gym. When the gym was first built, I started a program at the middle school called Unified Basketball, and I got students with special needs and students, regular education students, brought them together to play basketball together. And it started very, very informally, just with four kids, my son, a friend, and two autistic twins in the township. And we went there, you know, got permission to use the gym, and once we started, and it was so awesome, we said, "We need to make this a thing." So I went to the principal at the middle school and said, "I want to make this team, I have this great, perfect little gym that we can use, you know, I'll volunteer to do it." So I met the kids, he said yes. I would meet the kids at the middle school, we would walk over to the gym, use the gym. Once a week after school, parents would come, pick the kids up. The program became so amazingly awesome, the kids were having such a great time, that we said, "Now, these kids need to play against other kids, we need to make this more real for them." We got them uniforms, we, parents became involved, we got sponsors, the program grew. We were able to get, we started playing against teams who play in the regular Haverford Rec League. And that was fun, but it wasn't the same, because those teams were all teams comprised of completely typically developing kids. So we needed to find games against teams like our team. We were pretty much 50% typically developing kids and kids with various issues. So I was able to talk to friends in different schools and school districts, and we grew the league. So what started in the little gym right over there with four kids, we now have over 150 kids participating from various school districts. We outgrew having games in the little gym, and we had to move to a different location. But I'm here just speaking in support of, when a township has space available and volunteers in the community, good things can happen. And what we started there, very small, grew, and we've been on the news, we've been in Delaware County Times, featured us, you know. So I just wanted to speak about, while there may be, when new things happen in a community, there may be some headaches with the Malvern League and too many cars and this and that. But you, none of you probably knew about this other thing that started in that little gym. So it's important that you hear all sides. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment on the application?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Ryan Day, township resident for what I think is a long time, 25 years now. I'm just here in support of the applicant to second what a few people have said. Speaking of my daughter, she came from, she lost her mom at a young age. She had the comfort of finding friends who introduced her to the game of basketball, and I can blame Mike a lot for this. She has devoted a lot of time, emotion, she's met a lot of people. She's probably learned more in a gym about life than she has in a school. So having said that, I look at the gym, what used to be a church. The point of a church is congregation, meeting on the weekends, coming together with community. I think this place has repurposed that as, from a tremendous standpoint, of bringing community members, and maybe it's not always Haverford members together. I've been in a lot of gyms, there's been no gym that's ever been more intimate than this one, where the community atmosphere has always brought good feeling, a lot of laughter, a lot of smiles, and a lot of good, you know, good conversation, both inside and outside that gym. I had the opportunity to coach teams there. What an amazing experience to be in a tight little gym with little kids that all they want to do is yell, scream, and be chaotic. They had the opportunity to do that, right? And we were able to keep them crowded, they didn't run behind these huge bleachers and everything. And on top of it, we have two community members that stuck it out through thick and thin, put all of their resources into it to make it a sustainable place. So I think that needs to be respected to a high degree. Yes, I'm sure there's inconvenience, but when I look at the place catty-corner from it, when I drive down that street and there's what seems like 35 vans lined up there, it's tremendously chaotic, right? So when you look at some of, when you equate things, I think we're looking- I think we're looking at a community gem, a community resource that needs to be respected as such, and I think we need to stand behind it a little better. And we should probably encourage these opportunities where they can be funded or, you know, adequately put in place. You know, sure, you got to meet certain requirements and everything, but provided there's some flexibility around that, to make opportunities like this, you know, as a community resource, I think they need to be, you know, encouraged and really stood behind to make them successful, not to look, to put them down. So that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close this hearing. And this application will be in a position to be voted upon by this board at a later time. This board has forty-five days from today in order to issue a written decision on this conditional use application, which will include findings of fact and conclusions of law based upon the multiple parties of this application. And with that, I believe this hearing is in a position to be adjourned.
I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion, meeting's adjourned, thank you.